Alright, here we go. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome back. Night City Council is in session. This is episode two and I am joined with none other than the Mayor of Balance Town himself, James Hutt from Artel Saurian Games. James, how are you?
I'm doing great. I'm having a great day. I'm ready to do city council. Let's get this going.
That's right. The city council is in session. We are here. We have some questions on the docket from the community. Yes, that's exactly what we needed. A gavel for the mayor. And I want to thank all of you guys for turning in your questions and letting us know about them. Make sure you guys send me more on social media at John John the Wise. You can find me there. You can leave it in the comments below. Anyway, you can contact me. Go ahead and let me know. Email is actually the easiest for me because I can sort through it better. JohnJohnTheWise@gmail.com and James and I will answer as many questions from the community as we can. As the list just keeps on growing, James. So there's that. Also, make sure you guys join the Discord community. I have a link in the description below and you can also find Artel Saurian's official Discord from the affiliate server links. It's the first affiliate server. And make sure you guys go to ArtelSaurianGames.com, visit their blog, check out all the cool things and DLCs like the ones that we'll be talking about in this episode. Make sure you guys go there, then you can get all the goodies, follow them on social media. And make sure you guys join my Patreon, patreon.com/JohnJohnTheWise. If you want to support your boy, I really appreciate it. That's a great way to support me. And Tabletop Cyberpunk, the podcast is another thing that I'm doing. Make sure you guys subscribe to that. Alright, let's get straight into it.
I want to get to one thing real quick.
Yeah, yeah, please, sorry.
He says DLCs, but these are free. They are free DLCs.
I keep saying, I keep forgetting to say the free part and I'm glad that you're here, James.
You know, I don't want people, people thinking like they're charging any money. No, this is free candy. Go get the free candy.
You know what? I blame all these AAA developers that have DLCs and now everyone's triggered by them. They hear DLC and they're like, oh, you didn't put the whole game in there, you know?
But no, we keep, here we keep making the game and we give it to you.
Our tell story and our honest people.
Also, also buy our books, please.
Yeah, buy our books for sure. They're, they're great. I have a bunch of them over here. I can vouch for them. They're great books. Alright, so let's get straight into it. We're going to get into our questions and then later on, we're going to be talking about New Hardened Lieutenants, which is like the sequel to hardened moocs. And we'll also be talking about cyber chairs, a really fun, cool thing that our Telsorian designed for the public. And but before we get into that, like I said, let's get straight into the questions. Alright, the first question for today in council is, "I'm a little fuzzy on karate's armor breaking combo. So on my turn, after a successful melee strike and martial arts attack, meaning you do enough damage to get through armor and deal HP, HP damage, you then get to roll another check and if you pass that, you ablaze their armor by another two points? So this means you can strip four points of SP from a target in a turn? James, what's going on?"
Okay, first off, successful attacks do not necessarily deal damage. Um, so that's, that was wrong in the question. If I hit you and your, and your armor soaks the whole thing, that attack was still successful. It just didn't do any damage. Um, so I hit you. That's what matters. This is, this is because sometimes in like karate movies, um, they'll like do the like push move, right? They'll do a combo, they'll push you and then push you, then they'll get you in the vitals. Um, so we didn't want it to be only attacks that physically deal the damage are going to deal, uh, the spe- allow you to use the special effect from the special move. That's a big deal because this is the way you damage metal gear. Because if I punch metal gear, I'm probably not dealing any damage. But if I successfully attack, successfully attack, then I get to use a special move that lets me roll that special move. Um, and if I'm successful at that role, they lose two SP in that location. I believe it's all worn armor, right?
Uh, I, you know what? I should probably have it up.
Yeah, you know what? I'm using the beautiful PDF.
Yes.
Um, so the armor breaking combination, the requirement is that you would hit the same target with a melee weapon and a martial arts attack. So one of the attacks got to be a martial arts attack. The other one has to be a melee weapon.
Hmm. So that's where the armor breaking comes in. The idea is you're breaking in with the melee weapon.
The idea is the combination of the two is, is adding something special because of your training. Gotcha. And then, once per turn, when you fulfill this requirement, um, you can use the martial arts special move resolution, uh, which you will find on page 178. Uh, and you try to beat a DV15. If you succeed, the target you hit, twice this turn to do the requirement, has all of their worn armor abladed by additional two points. So it's kind of cool. Their, even their head armor will get inflated by two points.
Wow, amazing.
And their chest armor. So it's a cool move. And it sort of says, hey, we know you're not going to use, we know that you want to be a full fighter. But if you get extra training and an additional fighting style, you can use this special combo.
Mm-hmm. Got it. Okay, there you go. The martial arts is something that I really need to dive into. Uh, there's, this is the thing about Cyberpunk Red. There's so many layers to the game. The, because it's a 400-page monstrosity of awesomeness, that there's so many things to miss and I feel like the martial arts is something I really need to get back into and, and figure out what to do. Because there's so many cool, uh, ideas in here. So we got to give that a shot. Anyway, I don't know why I digress like that. I just, I just said what was on my mind.
System too, man.
Alright, let's, uh, move on to the next question. How big should a typical battle map be, Mr. Mayor of Balance Town?
Um, you know, that really depends on what you want to do. Um, but I'll give a better answer than that. Um, I want to say that certain encounters work better with bigger maps. Um, if you're doing an alley, it doesn't need to be that big.
Yeah.
Um, if you're doing like, let's attack this giant facility. It'd be kind of cool if you got a really big table and put the facility on a really big map. Um, you know, you ever go to one of those Italian restaurants?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, where, um, they, they put paper on the table and the kids could draw on it, crayon.
Yeah.
Go to one of those and play some Cyberpunk Red. That's all I'm saying. I'm saying do it, say and do it, be that guy.
That's cool. Let, let us know in the comments how that goes. We want to know.
Uh, I want to know.
Yeah, we want to know. This is our show and we get to decide what we want to know and what we don't want to know and that's something I want to know.
Also, if you've got any crazy massive city setups with 3D stuff. Um,
Yeah.
Show me.
Definitely. Hashtag Night City Council on all social media. Let's see it. Let's see your cool setups over there, ladies and gentlemen.
I want to, I want to see them.
Uh, I, if I can add, the thing about battle maps is, uh, maybe the answer that you're not looking for, whoever asked this question, which by the way, I'm going to start writing usernames. I don't know why I didn't that do that in the beginning. Now I realize like I should have done it. But the answer I'm going to give you is it depends on the situation, a lot like James said. The battle map itself is kind of a characteristic of your session. So it tells a story just in itself, just looking at the map tells a story. So what kind of story do you want to tell about the combat encounter that you had? Do you want your players having to go across a large no man's land where they have to use tactics, smoke grenades or all kinds of other things to try to get across a gap, to capture somebody, obtain them, kill them in melee combat? Or do you want it to be a close, dirty bathroom in a nightclub? Where literally it's four on four, you're in a nightclub, you're, you're breaking the mirror, you're, you're knocking over the stalls? That all tells a story too. So really, you got to, I would work backwards. I would say, what kind of story do I want to tell in this combat encounter? How do I want it to feel? Do I want it to feel gritty, desperate? And then from there, try to come up with what you think it would look cool, like in a movie or in a scenario, in a combat encounter scenario. What do you think about that, James?
Oh, I think that's why they call him John John the Wise. That's the wisdom right there.
That's high praise.
That's some good stuff. Um, yeah. I think that battle maps are great. I love battle maps. I love 3D terrain.
Yeah.
Um, I spend a lot of money on 3D terrain.
Yeah, like monsterfightclub.com.
Doing it. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Shout out. Shout out Monster Fight Club. Go get your 3D terrain. Go get your 3D cities. Enjoy that.
Uh, I'm drinking tea out of a beer stein, if you guys are wondering.
This is Fresca out of the Fresca can. I didn't pour anything else in this Fresca can.
Sure you didn't. Uh, okay. Let's move on to the next question. When a netrunner controls a turret or active defense, do they use their own skills or does an interface role work instead?
So, um, it depends. Uh, the rule is when you are in control of that control node, let's say it's a turret and it has an assault rifle in it, then you use shoulder arms because it's an assault rifle. Um, if there's a in-place defense and it fires a shrieker, um, that would use handgun because a shrieker is an exotic handgun. That would be, uh, so it sort of uses it in a VR sort of way. Um, so it makes it, it's the idea is that it makes it more intuitive for the netrunner.
Yeah, like they're directly connected to it and it's really about their knowledge and skill on using that type of weapon. Uh, that, that's how connected they are to their, their interface cables or their cyber.
It's another reason, it's another reason why heavy weapons might be a skill you want on a netrunner if you want to use those really big turrets.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Flamethrower turrets. Um, same thing with a nomad if, because a lot of the cars have heavy weapons on them. That's some of the heavy weapons stuff.
God, is there anything more cyberpunk than a flamethrower turret? I mean, that's up there, right?
I, I love, I love personally, I love the, uh, the water jet cutter.
Ooh, the ones that like it's a thin stream and it'll cut through like straight through your body.
Look up that on a YouTube video. How bad, how bad you can get a water jet going.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
Or the, the air blasting, like on the wood, you're like, ooh, my skin's not as hard as wood. Ooh, what would that do to me?
Keep your fingers away, dude.
Oh my god.
Alright, uh, next question.
In a wood turning accident.
Uh, get that visual. That's cyberpunk. Alright, guys. Do defenders have to declare that they're evading gunfire before the enemy combatant rolls to hit?
It's, it's before.
It has to be before.
Because, because you, here's what, here's what you want. On your table, um, melee combat is I'm rolling to defend it. I'm rolling to attack. And that's fun. Like, there's something really fun about, he's rolling a die and I gotta roll a die too, to defend against his die. And when you're dodging a bullet, it's the same thing.
Yeah.
You want that drama. If you're, if you're the GM, you want the drama of them rolling at the same time because that's fun. Um, and you also, it's kind of weird to dodge a bullet. It's already been shot.
Yeah, and also if you declare it.
It's go really fast.
If you declare it after the roll, then, okay, so like the DV chart says you got to roll a 20, right? The guy rolls a 13, he would have missed, but you declared to evade, you rolled a 13, you rolled a 10, even though.
It's a little cheaty. There's some cheaty, there's some cheaty here.
I like the idea of it because it means that you made a mistake to go into the bullet. He made a mistake, he was going to miss you, but you made sure he didn't miss by trying to dodge the wrong way.
Yeah.
It's kind of like that.
I mean, if they're trying to do a really long shot, um, and you're trying to dodge it, it would have probably been harder to just make the shot.
Exactly. So you might decide, you know what? I don't want to leave, I don't want to mess it up and leave it to fate. Why don't I just go with the DV chart and not evade this shot?
Now, here's the thing. If you use the DV chart, you say, I'm not going to evade it. You couldn't use luck.
Oh, yeah, that's right. You can't, you can do it.
If you really don't want to get shot today and you can see the sniper on the roof, you can do it.
Yeah, 100%.
Spend all eight of your luck. And you've built for eight luck, so you deserve to be able to do that.
Exactly. I love that.
Eight luck characters are good.
They're very good.
Build one and then pour all eight luck onto something every session.
Autofire. Uh, explain, explain demon AI and how they function. What are the limitations? Can you give us an example of an encounter with a demon and a netrunner? This is from Yig1015.
Okay. Thank you for your question, Yig. Let me just Ctrl F demon for you.
So basically, while you're looking it up, uh, my understanding is a demon is a dummy AI and it just has a set of rules that it follows. It's not intuitive. It's not like a, uh, machine learning AI or anything like that. It literally just has its rules and its algorithm and it just abides by those rules.
Yes, um, that is basically how it operates. Um, it's got a little bit, it's smarter than just a typical black ice. Like it's smarter than a hellhound. The hellhound will literally walk at you and hit you.
Yeah.
Um, a demon, uh, is an intelligent system. Uh, so it operates control nodes. Um, depending on its priority, it's sort of a up to the GM to determine how the demon operates in the architecture of what its priorities are set to be. But typically, it will use every net action it possibly can to operate a control node. Then it will use its remaining actions to either get control nodes back or zap the, uh, um, enemy netrunner if they're there. Um, depending on, uh, if its priority is, if there is an enemy, they're there, kill it immediately, or if there's an enemy netrunner, they're wrestle with it.
Gotcha.
Um, depending on how, because here's the thing, if I owned a nuclear power plant, I would set my D, I mean, in that one to, no, 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 you want to wrestle the control node away from the netrunner. You really want to do that. Don't kill them. The control node is more important.
Yeah, 100%.
There would be a demon that just did that. And there would be demons that were set to, no, kill the netrunner, kill the netrunner, kill the netrunner.
Could you have multiple demons in a net, net architecture?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so you can have some doing the turret, some zapping net runners, some doing other control nodes.
Yeah. Um, honestly though, if you were running a nuclear power plant, you would have sysadmin net runners.
Yeah, yeah.
In there defending it.
And the top of the line equipment and everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, uh.
You would be, you know, fighting against large stacks of money.
I had a question about, uh, the demon, because in the rules, it says they know when a netrunner is in the system immediately.
Yes, they do.
Does that necessarily mean that they can alert everybody immediately? Or does, is there a control node they have to access first to set an alarm? No, so as soon as you get in.
If you have sysadmin control, if you have access to the bottom of the net architecture as a netrunner, it's one of the things that is, you can tell if a demon knows there's somebody there. It, it would be really dumb if they knew and they didn't tell you.
Yeah, so, so before, as soon as you jack in, they know you're there and they tell everybody.
Yes. Um, an enemy netrunner worth their salt will also be able to do that.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, a powerful corporation will just pay people to stay logged on. Just wait. They're just like a, they're a security guard, just like the security guard in the front door.
Yeah. So the logic is they know that there's someone within six meters of the control node or the access point.
I like to use the example of the movie theater. The movie theater is going to have like a bodyguard in the front because you know, something shady might happen. You never know. Um, but they're not going to have a netrunner always online, active in front of their net architecture like, let's, let's, let's wait for this netrunner to come.
Yeah.
I'm here. I'll be here when you come back. Have a nice day. Um, no, uh, but if your nuclear power plants, your Arisaka facilities, those are going to have netrunners on payroll.
So it's actually advantageous for you and your party. If you're trying to be sneaky, you're trying to sneak into a place, don't access the access points unless you know that there isn't a demon there because as soon as you do, the jig is up. Everyone gets caught. So it might be a better idea to wait until you have more information before you just jack into an access point.
It's not, it's not sneaky.
Yeah.
Um, if they've got, if they've alarming the front door, what you can do is, if you were doing that, you could put a virus in that system a month ago to only activate later to turn off their ability to know you were there.
You just, uh, come in dressed as the IT guy, ring the doorbell and say, I'm here to fix the.
My, my point is, that doesn't need to stop your big heist because your netrunner should be able to get around this with the virus ability. But you know, they'll have to do a setup heist before their heist.
Sure.
Everybody loves that.
Yeah. The work you do.
It's only a wrinkle for you to smooth out yourself.
Okay, I like it. Alright, that's fun. Alright, let's move on. Is choking a grappled opponent an action? How do you successfully choke someone?
It is. It's an action. It's an action called choke. Um, the action called choke is on page choke.
It's in the grappling rules.
In the grappling rules, uh, choke is 177. You're currently the attacker in a grapple. You can use your action to choke the defender, dealing your body stat directly to their hit points and damage. That's, choke does a lot of damage, people.
Yeah, it's, uh, so basically, the order of operations is, you get into, you move into melee range, you roll your grab, which is brawling, right? You're brawling versus their evasion. They lose, you grab them, your turn's over.
Let me be specific. No.
Dex plus.
Grab is brawling versus brawling.
Oh, okay, okay. Good, good call.
Uh,
Both you and your target within your reach roll dex plus brawling. Okay, so you win and you choose to grab hold of the defender. Both of you are now considered to be grappled and take minus two to all actions for as long as you both remain in a grapple. Your turn is over. It's going to be the combatant's turn, let's say. And now they have to try to get out of the grapple if they want to or take control. Right?
Yep, and you get out of a grapple by rolling grappling.
Mm-hmm. Which is.
You don't get out with evasion, you got to use brawling.
So it's just brawling.
This gives opportunity for characters that are, that are quick and evasive against some things, but you can hold on to them.
Mm-hmm. So let's say.
Those aren't the same skill in real life.
Exactly. So let's say on their turn, they fail their grapple check again and you're still in control. Now on your turn, which the round is over.
They wasted their whole turn trying to get out of your grapple.
Exactly. And now you still have.
That's why grappling is powerful.
And then you can choke, you can throw, you can do any of these, uh, I think there's a martial arts ones that you can do too, right?
There are martial arts special moves that end, that, uh, are grappling. You can do, uh, iron grip.
Yeah.
Iron grip makes it even harder to get out of your grapple.
Yeah. You need to beat a DV15.
Uh, you gotta, you gotta beat a DV15.
Yeah, exactly. That's 179 in the, in the Aikido.
And the, um, the grapple rules again, 177. This is one of those pages. Bookmark it.
Yeah, 100% martial arts grappling.
Yeah, as with any tabletop role playing game, bookmark the grapple rules page. Makes your job much easier as a GM.
Yeah, and to reiterate, you do your bodies, your body stat directly to their hit points, ignores armor. So you, you got a body eight, they just took eight HP damage. So that's nice. That's what choke can do. And then if you have three successive rounds of a choke, they go unconscious regardless of their hit points.
Yep. That's a big one.
Yeah, it's a very big one. So there you go. Hope that answered your question. Uh, next question. Any advice for a larger groups of six plus players?
Oh, six plus players. Um, I would say don't run a move encounter. Uh, run lieutenant size, run lieutenant encounters. Um, with six plus players, the amount of moves that you have to run will start making it looks like a dance floor.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and there, it's really hard to do tactical combat in a dance floor. And it's hard to come up with ideas why 12 people keep showing up.
Yeah.
Um, you know what I mean? They were already here when you got here is fine. And that's basically how you got to go it. Because 12 people jump in through the windows is weird.
It is.
Um, and, uh, I, I would say, this is one of those times where, um, at six players, you're at the ceiling of like, you start entering that place where turns are going to be like, when is my next turn? I'll go to the bathroom. And that falls apart, that, that makes the, um, at least in, I don't know, everything's opening up again, playing D and D with each other again, all vaccinated. It's a beautiful time. Um, but, um, if you go higher than six people, if even in person, it can become, when is my next turn? I'll go to the bathroom. You know, is the netrunner done?
Yeah.
Oh, the net, I'm, the netrunner's in between me? I'll get a slice of pizza.
Yeah, exactly. And.
And we don't want that. We want to play cyberpunk. We don't, we don't want to eat slices of pizza.
And even as an experienced GM, I've still, you know, you got to sometimes take a little extra time for some things. You got to look up a rule and stuff like that. And that even adds more time to the, the shot clock.
That being said, I tuned Cyberpunk Red to be as quick as you possibly can get it while playing a game with this amount of crunch. Um, I think it works better. What I'm saying is, all games struggle at six people.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Cyberpunk Red struggles less than other games, but it's still not ideal.
Yeah.
Um, those, as long as everyone is patient, it's fine. It's just, I'm not patient. I want to be real with you. I'm, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and honestly.
Everyone is an angel.
Well, you are, James. You're an angel to me.
Oh, no, you're, you're an angel. You're an angel.
Thanks.
But that's why you have a angelic surname, like the wise following your name. I don't have the chivalrous following hut.
You're a mayor, dude. You were elected into city office, okay?
Are you assuming I was elected?
You're looking with an iron grip, huh? That's what you did, right? You destroyed the opposition? I will be mayor. Um, his ambition knows no bounds, ladies and gentlemen.
It's like a Simba, um, no, not Simba. Sorry. It's a Scar move.
Dude, that's funny. That's the second time somebody referenced that today to me. That's hilarious.
Oh, god, so much Disney.
It's too much.
Move on, move on. It's too much Disney.
Uh, I was going to say, what I usually do for six plus players is, uh, you got to make sacrifices uh, within the rule set sometimes just to move things along. Your priority becomes moving things along more than it is making sure your rules is written and all that stuff. So I've done like all kinds of techniques, uh, to make sure, like I'll do group skill checks. Everybody's doing the skill check at once. Um, you know, and in combat, instead of tracking armor ablation and HP for the enemies, I do like a tally system. Like, you know, you did enough damage to do three tallies of damage and they're dead. I don't, I don't do calculations and stuff like that because that's just adding extra time, extra bookkeeping. Instead, I could just make it more cinematic, make sure that the enemies, the, the players are taking care of their HP and their armor and their stuff. So I don't have to worry about that. I just have to make sure to let them know, you got hit, you took this amount of damage. That's all I got to do.
Those are some, I think we're both giving very realistic answers about real gameplay with that player count.
Yeah.
We've been through it. It's, four's a gold number, three's great too.
Yeah.
Two is, hey, at least you're getting to play a table, top role playing game.
Yeah.
Better really like the person in a one-player campaign.
Mm-hmm.
Um, five is, is great.
Mm-hmm.
Six is starting to get up there.
When you get that sixth person, it really, it really, yeah.
I, I'm amazed, honestly. If you have an eight-person campaign, go long and everybody shows up every single time.
Yeah, that's.
That's great. And if you can do it, you're probably the type of person that can handle all those calculations all the time. Um, I, it's probably a skill set that I haven't developed, to be honest.
No, you, you brought up a very, very good point. I'm going through this with my Patreon game. I have six players. I planned on splitting them. But they work so well together. I wanted to experiment and see if I could maybe make it work. And, uh, the problem now that we're running into is if all six of them cannot show on that exact same day at that exact same time. all six of them cannot show on that exact same day at that exact same time, the game gets put off. It gets put off another week and another week and another week. And now you're relying on seven different people to be there at the same time, same place, same time to try to make a game happen. And that's just, it's very difficult to do in itself. So.
I mean, I, I get that. That's, that's another secret.
That's why prison would be cool.
Scheduling, scheduling is the play some T R P G's in prison.
Dude, I-
You gotta play with a card deck. You know how to do that?
Yeah, no, no, no. I, yeah, yeah, I know how to do the card deck, but do you know of any uh people that play Cyberpunk?
Oh, yeah.
Dude, that's great.
Totally.
You got nothing else to do.
Cyberpunk is even easier to play in prison.
Yeah.
Because you can have with one fifty-two card deck, you can have four people have D tens by splitting different um, splitting the different card deck ups.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You can't have dice. Uh, because that's gambling.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You have cards. Because that's not gambling.
I guess not.
Who knows? Um, at the end of the day, after they, after they take away your cards and depending on your, your prison, you you might need to go with scraps of paper with numbers on them.
Ah, yeah. That, you can't stop-
That's how I hear it. That's how I hear it. I I love, I love looking up how people play tabletop role playing games in prison. That's just a fun thing.
Maybe that should be a bucket list for me, is run a game at a prison for prisoners.
Beautiful. You should do that. That'd be fun.
That'd be a fun little bucket list. Alright, night, put it on the docket for uh the Night City Council. Alright, uh
We'll be out. Reach.
We've done a half hour of answering questions, so night, the 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 questions and answers uh are done for today. Thank you guys so much for all your questions. Make sure you guys remember, johnjohnthewise@gmail.com. Send me all your questions, social media, whoever you can contact. Let them know that you got a question for the Night City Council, hashtag Night City Council. And we will make sure to answer as many as we can. Uh, but now, let's talk about some free DLCs that you can find at Artel Sorin's website. And the first of them being Hardened Lieutenants, which we talked about being the sequel to Hardened Moocs. So, James, why don't you give us a little bit of info on Hardened Lieutenants?
So Hardened Lieutenants are, uh, so it's a sequel to Hardened Moocs. It's uh another one in the Hardened series. And what I'm doing is, I've recognized uh that some people really like to play combat optimized characters. And um in Cyberpunk Red, we needed a play, a way to continue to challenge those characters while still this is, this was the reason why I had to, to do this. While still making sure that you don't challenge them by just giving your opponents more money, cuz that money always ends up in the hands of your players after they kill that person.
Yep.
Um, and two, um, you gotta make sure that you're just not scaling encounters up, more people. Cuz you run into the problem we ran into with six-player parties and mooc encounters. Twelve people jump out of the window. Um. You know, twelve people rappel down from the ceiling. Why are we suddenly beating twelve groups of twelve? Who are all these twelve people?
Yeah.
Um, why are we constantly beset by a baker's dozen?
How did we make twelve people so mad?
We make twelve people so mad every week.
Every week, dude. Maybe we need to go to another city.
Right, yeah. We, we, it's time to move.
Yeah, it's time to move, man.
Um, so uh the answer that Hardened Lieutenants gives is, your guys are, your players are a little stronger uh playing some stronger characters, so we can ratchet up the difficulty on each of the individual uh enemy classes. This time it's lieutenants. Um. So what I like to do with the Hardened series is I like to give alternate versions of every lieutenant we put in the corebook. And I like to give a D ten table to spice things up.
Oh, yeah.
So this time, the D ten table to spice things up uh is hardened lieutenant tactics. Um, all these new hardened lieutenants have a higher tactical score and a higher int score um to use it. Uh, and they're lieutenants, so they're commanding people. Uh, they know how to operate a battle. Um, they know how to, you know, control the theater, uh as it were.
Well, I have a question, James. How do I know if my players are considered hardened?
Oh, well, there is, there is a chart. Let me just Google hardened lieutenants to uh easily get this PDF for free on our website.
Mm-hmm.
I just have to figure out how to spell lieutenants off the top of my head.
Man, here we go.
Oh, no, I'm doing this live.
There's a Liu, there's a Liu in there.
Liu.
But then the British say leftenants, and that just throws me off.
Boom. Found it. I just typed in hardened lieutenants. I clicked the button that said download, and it's on my screen.
Said it and forget it.
And it was free. And it was free.
You paid nothing?
I feel like I paid nothing. Um. I feel like a ham. Um, okay.
Know what we're, we're doing here.
Good, good. Um, so on page two, what is hardened, is what you were setting me up for.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know.
Um.
We're trying to put a show on here.
So honestly, I should have defined what I meant in hardened moocs. And here, I have been forced, it has been suggested of me, to tell people what I'm actually talking about.
Hmm.
Um, the definition of hardened is hardened is a prefix that means combat optimized. It defines a tier of play that's designed to provide adequate challenge, adequate challenge um to combat optimized characters while still letting them be combat badasses. All wa- all without disrupting game economy or scaling up the number of enemy combatants in an encounter. Instead of blowing up quantity, we're increasing quality.
Exactly.
Um, so a hardened crew is a crew filled with hardened player characters. We're just gonna repeat the word hardened a lot.
A lot.
We're gonna do that until I finish the hardened series. So, put in for the long haul.
Okay.
Um. So if even one member of a crew isn't considered hardened, we'll get to what that means. Um, you don't have a hardened crew. So if you have three hardened solos and one rocker boy that cannot evade a bullet or do anything combating, your squishy bard friend and your three, you know, cutthroat
Solos.
razor, wire, killer people. Um, makes that not a hardened group. Uh, so
Yeah.
You need to, so here's the reason. You need to be careful, because if you use hardened stuff, things with the hardened prefix against crews that are not hardened, you will probably kill that bard.
Yeah.
And they might figure, it might feel unfair.
So, and and just-
Not a good character death, that's probably a bad character death.
Yeah.
Which is why I'm being very specific upfront. So there are some pretty funny, um, so, I think it's funny. Um, page two, uh, what is a hardened character? It's a player character that meets any of the following criteria, and here I list things like, they have a ref of eight with a dodge skill of six. Or they can attack with a stat plus skill plus mod of fifteen or higher. Or they have a will and body of sixteen or higher.
Hmm.
Um, they own a weapon that's five thousand dollars or more. They've got a Malorian.
Hmm.
You just got upgraded. Welcome to hell.
Welcome to the hardened crew.
Um, dex, uh dex of eight and a move of eight. Um. Autofire or martial arts skill of six or higher.
Hmm.
Solo rank four or higher. So if you start as a solo-
You're hardened.
You're hardened, no matter what you do.
Exactly. That's great. I really like that criteria because it it takes away the guesswork of whether this is okay for my crew or not. As a game master, you can look at this criteria and then just look at your players and go, oh, okay, I shouldn't feel bad about throwing lieutenants at them because they're all hardened. So yeah, that's good.
I wanted to be very clear. Um, I'm especially looking forward to people um, creating player characters uh that are deliberately one stage under this criteria to uh by one point. I did all this, but please don't send the evil people that.
Come on, have some fun over there.
Please don't send the hardened people.
If you do that, please stop.
Fear of the hardened people.
Stop doing that.
Fear of thunder, of lightning. Um, anyway, so unlike this important, un- because unlike with hardened moocs, um, that can be mixed in sparingly uh against non-hardened crews, not cause any balance issues. If you put hardened lieutenants against a non-hardened crew, you will kill a character.
Yeah.
You, don't do that unless you want that.
Alright, uh, are you ready for a little scenario that I came up with that you can use these hardened lieutenants with?
Hit me with it. Tell me, tell me what you came up with, John John.
Okay, so last time on episode one, I gave you guys a little scenario with the hardened moocs. And this is actually continuing that scenario. So you did that one, and then now we wanna continue the story and see what's going on. Uh, you have with you a netrunner that was uh the person that was kidnapped, and you rescued them, and now you have them. And their name is Binary. And they let you know, hey, look, the job's not over. You guys rescued me, thank you, but they thought that there was more memory chips out there of information, but they have all the information. So we need to go break into their facility and take my memory chips back, sell them on the black market, and I'll give you guys a piece of the cut. And it's whether the players wanna do that or not, who wants to give up that kind of fun little heist. Uh, the idea is it's a Girafa uh warehouse, and you have, eh, you have to it's a local storage that has all the memory chips. He'll sell the information. I said that. Okay, here we go. The location uh is a service business that is a front for clandestine Girafa operations. That's how I thought, you know, maybe Girafa has these crews out there, but they're like clandestine. They can't be on the books because it looks bad optically in public for all the things that they're doing. So it's either like a mechanic shop and one of the back rooms is where they do their operations, a brain dance center or a home improvement store. And, you know, in the back, the idea is in the back is where they have all this stuff.
A lot of backroom construction stuff. Sounds, sounds like Girafa.
Exactly.
Like might be some of the, some of the Bratva connected people in the motherland coming over.
Exactly. A lot of uh union, uh owning the unions, running the unions and stuff like that. Uh, some enemies at the location, I thought, why not have one of the hardened net runners, the anti-personnel flavor that we have in that hardened lieutenants? Have that person in the net architecture that your netrunner has to hack or that uh the netrunner ally that you have with you, maybe he can come if you don't have one in your party, and he can try to do his thing. And the GM runs all that. Or, and and then also you have hardened security officers, the raid or the siege flavor, whichever of the two that is in the book or in the DLC, those work really well uh in conjunction with that netrunner. Um, so some of the challenges at this location, I would say information has been downloaded onto a Girafa database and no longer is on the memory chips. So it's on this database. This allows for net running, net running to obtain it or the hard drive must be physically stolen from a well-guarded area. So if you don't have a netrunner, you still have a chance to go pick up that hard drive, but it's gonna be much harder because you have to actually be in physical range of it. Um.
I would imagine it would be like I, I mean, if they have a netrunner with them, then it's obviously that the netrunner is gonna have to do it. But if they don't, you have this other option of, I I like how you did two.
Yeah.
Um, because not all parties are gonna have the netrunner.
Yeah, and maybe they don't wanna take the ally NPC with them and do that whole thing. Maybe they're like, you know, you just stay back.
You totally can't, um, can't. You can't know what the players will do.
Exactly. So the, if you have a netrunner, it's great because at a distance, you can take all the information, leave a virus and go, alright, let's get out of here, guys. We don't have to stay here and fight. But if you don't have a netrunner, you gotta get in the nitty gritty, go to their location, break in, go through their defenses, get the thing and get out. And that's, that might be a little more tougher, more challenging, but it's still a lot of fun. So that's my idea for using these hardened lieutenants. I hope you guys enjoy that.
That sounds awesome, man.
Yeah, and when James uh and Artel Sorin release the next DLC, uh we'll make a continuation. Why not? That'll be fun.
Hardened, uh hardened, what was the next one? Mini, mini bosses?
Hardened mini bosses, ooh.
Oh, I think, I think it's mini bosses next.
Ooh, okay. I like that. Little atom smasher going on.
I remember. No, no, that that stuff's safe for hardened bosses. I couldn't-
Ooh, okay.
Mini boss.
Little-
There's a, there's, there's one tier. Uh, anyway, forgot to mention. Um, just because there are less lieutenants, um, something I'm gonna do from now on for the rest of the hardened series is uh I provided two different takes on each of the lieutenants to harden them, just to give you a little bit more char- uh variety in your stat blocks. Um, and I tried to split them into different ideas so that you could scrape off the label and change the name on this one, do it twice, and then take the other one, do the same thing, do it twice. And uh the players won't know.
No, no.
Um, they'll never figure it out.
No, they'll never know.
They don't watch the show.
It's honestly just using them as a reference, they won't watch the show. Nobody watches the show.
They're watching, don't worry.
You're only watching this cuz you're diehard, alright?
I hope they watch the show. Get them to watch the show. Invite them.
They're gonna watch it. Tell them to watch the show, come on.
I'm gonna watch it, come on. Subscribe to the channel.
It's just good reference.
Like the video.
Like the video, subscribe, come on, do your part. Uh, I was gonna say, it's good to just have them as reference anyway, in case you wanna create your own moocs and lieutenants. You could just see, you know, how the guys at Artel Sorin design it, if they were to do it. And that'll give you a great idea on what you need to do on yours.
Make them, change a couple of things, make it yours. Totally. Give them backstory, run life path for them.
Yeah.
Make, make players feel bad when you kill them.
Exactly, yeah.
Um.
He had a family.
Fun thing, we got Paige, uh, family. I know what all their names are. Uh, he's never gonna be able to get to go to his son's graduation.
Dude, oh, what are you doing? We're supposed to have fun.
Uh, oh god, uh, page three uh has hardened lieutenant tactics. Um, which uh, which or maybe you roll on it, have a little, have a good time. Um. You know, they, they sort of change it, like, oh, this lieutenant might have a first aid paramedic skill. Um, or I get, I get the spicy ones, my favorite.
I rolled an eight. What's an eight?
Oh, it's my favorite. Uh, lieutenant has done extensive research into the combat capabilities of the party.
Oh.
Which means you get to roleplay them like they're Batman.
So basic, so that adds a whole new level. They knew you were coming.
Like, they know, they know what you're doing.
Damn, they're on you.
He yells, one of those like, that's Reginald. He's, stay further away from him. Don't get near him.
I love gold. Alright.
I love, I love gold.
Alright, let's move on to the next free DLC that you can pick up from Artel Sorin's website.
Why'd you have to say that?
I had to give you the chuckles, dude. I had to give you a little bit of the chuckles.
The chuckles, yes. More free DLCs.
That's right. This one came out a little bit uh, eh, little bit back in the day, not too far back in the day, but we-
I remember this one.
I think it doesn't get its, its due because people, it needs to get out there. Basically, there's the cyber chair. Uh, the idea is, these are rules on how to operate the chairs, such as controlling them with your mind and interface plugs or rules about what a critical injury to your move stat means on a cyber chair. And why get a cyber chair versus cyberware is a question that I had. And I think the answer is human, you you avoid humanity loss, there are no surgery risks. The, you avoid this cost of expensive cyberware, and also it's cool. Now, in the dark future, style over substance, having a cool cyber chair is there, i- it means something on the streets, on the mean streets, especially if it has a pop-up gun on it or something like that. That's fun.
And there, and there are injuries that, that wouldn't require a cyber leg, but would still leave one paralyzed.
Exactly, exactly.
It's, point is, they're cool. Um, I got ma- Big Ops' Sarah Thompson, who worked with us on this one. Um, that's actually, uh, that's her in the picture on page one.
Yeah, she, didn't she do an actual play? Uh, she did the sirenscape actual play.
Oh, she's, she's, she's out there doing everything, making combat wheelchairs for D and D.
Yeah.
Everything. She's doing it all. She's doing the most.
So-
Super pleasure to work with her. Um, did some writing with her on Witcher as well.
Shout out, shout out to Sarah Thompson.
Big shout outs. Um, so there are two cyber chairs here, and I wanna get into the nitty gritty. There's two of them. There's Mercurius. The Mercurious cyber chair and the Spider cyber chair.
These are both from Rockland Augmented, by the-
Rockland Augmetics, yes. Um, the Mercurius is hundred EB. Doesn't cost a lot of money. Has all of the mobility benefits. Um, but it doesn't get any cyberware options. But the thing is, it still can, I want to be specific about this. It's only a hundred dollars. The tech roll ability can upgrade it rather easily to give it one slot. What are you gonna do with that? I don't know. That's your job.
Hell, yeah.
Not my job.
Nope.
Um, Spider cyber chair has tons of cyberware options on it and a bunch of fun stuff. Um, and it looks amazing.
It's a top of the line version. This is, uh, this is what you get if you got a little bit of money, a thousand eddies to be exact.
Thousand, so you can, my favorite part about this DLC is both of these items are it. Usually an item that cool be 5,000. I sound like I'm trying to sell it to people. Um, but it's free. It's, I'm not trying to sell it to you. Same. But you could get it at level one. E, level one. Roll ability four. Um, starting character.
Yeah.
You can get it as a starting character. Yeah, it takes a large chunk of your stuff, but it doesn't take as much of your stuff as you might think. Um, you could get this instead of a high-quality assault rifle. Um, and I think it has, it, it's a way of saying, um, this is what my character is about and they're cool. And it also doesn't break the bank at a thousand. Cause it doesn't require you to get interface plugs. You don't have to have interface plugs. You can use one of your arms to control it.
Yeah.
Um, anyway, um.
Those are the two, those are the two options you can get from the DLC. And basically it gives your players a chance to have an affordable option with, uh, the, the chance of making it a little bit cooler with the tech. Or getting a top of the line option that, I mean, the sky's the limit on what kind of cyberware you can put on there. You can put uh, heat, um, infrared sensors on it. You can put all kinds of cra- any kind of cyberware you see on there. You can somehow make it work with the chair and the player and do something really unique with them.
Yeah, uh, it's cyber arms, cyber leg or cyber limb options.
Oh, sorry. So cyber eyes are not there. Okay.
Yeah, you can't. Unless you're a tech.
That's right.
Are you a tech? Are you a tech, John John?
Technically, I'm not.
Not sure, not sure I can let you do that.
There you go. See, James has, has given me permission. Oh, thanks. I'm your favorite.
No, I said you couldn't do it. Did you mishear me?
Oh, what the hell, man?
I said, no, you're not a tech. You're not a tech.
Oh, that's right. I gotta find a tech. I gotta find a tech. IT, I got a job for you and don't ask questions. All right, so let's talk about my scenario. I got a scenario with the cyber chairs.
You did a scenario.
I gotta have a scenario. Excuse me. Um, okay, so the scenario, first of all, I gotta tell you about murder ball, which is actually in the DLC. They talk about it. It is.
Night City Nuke.
The Night City Nuke is the official cyber chair.
For a team.
Yeah, and they play murder ball.
With the nerd, nuke.
I, it is, it's totally on the nose, right?
Said nerk. I said nerk for a second.
It's okay.
Don't happen.
Yeah, it's, we all do it. This is a part of being on the internet. Um, so murder ball is a cyber chair sport with a ball and teams from every city. As James mentioned, the Night City Nuke is one of them. That's the first thing I thought of when I thought of these chairs is, uh, there's a lot of crazy cool sports that, uh, people in wheelchairs play in real life, like basketball and racing and stuff like that. So that was like one of the first things that came to my mind. And then I read the DLC, saw that and I was like, perfect, we're on the same fro- frequency on that. So basically the scenario is the police have tipped off that there will be an assassination attempt against the government office holder, such as a senator or councilman or a mayor. All right. Something like that is happening. The government worker loves murder ball and the police are spread far too thin to watch over the murder ball game. They're looking at all threats at all locations within the city. So this would work better if your players were cops. Then they could be assigned to the stadium, watching over this murder ball thing. But if they are not, then they can just be mercenaries that the cops contract out. They're, they're contractors, basically. And with the way things are in Cyberpunk Red, they, th- as far as we know in the lore, lawmen take all shapes and sizes, all forms. As if, if you got a gun and you're protecting your community, that's great. You're now a lawman. And that can happen with your players as well. So the players are tasked with investigating the murder ball stadium to look for clues to a possible assassination attempt, but they need to be careful not to tip off the would-be assassin that they are there to investigate the matter. So if they're not cops, this actually works in their favor. They can just come in as normal people, but if they are cops, they gotta do some undercover work. Therefore, the players must enter the stadium under the guise of a murder ball amateur team that is competing to earn a spot in the big leagues. The whole team is gonna be on, on the cyber chair. All right? Before every major match, two amateur teams play a game against each other and the winner gets a shot to possibly play in the big leagues. They do that every, before every match. People come and watch it. It extends the fun. Because of this, many teams flock to the stadium two days before the game and they try out for one of the amateur spots. So basically, this is how I suppose how it can go down. The goal is to get your players to sit on these chairs and use them in some sort of combat, roleplay or chase scenario. And bonus GM points, if you get to make them do all three, that, that would be great. And one of the amateur teams is harboring the assassin and his cyber chair is rigged with a massive explosion that is sure to kill everyone in the stadium, plus knock down some buildings nearby. And, or alternatively, one of the referees who's also in a cyber chair is the assassin. So the idea is the players will find out through their investigations that either one of the amateur teams or the referee is the one harboring a bomb. So you gotta learn, you know, learn about these people, learn, leave some clues for them. But they have to get comfortable sitting in these cyber chairs or they're gonna give themselves away as somebody that doesn't belong in that area and it would tip off the assassin. So that's my scenario. Uh, hope you guys enjoy that. What do you think about that, James?
I like that. I like that. I like that it's, um, it's a, it's a murder mystery, kind of. It's, uh, I, I like, I also love that it deals with semi-pro sports.
Yeah.
Cause you hardly get to, to talk about semi-pro sports a lot of the time or think semi-pro sports a lot of the time.
Yeah.
It just seems like, um, I like it because it's a story from the, like, the margin of your mind. Um, it's, it's something that, uh, it, it's also kind of, how do I put it? Um, if you tell people, hey, you gotta do this. Um, they'll, they'll think, I didn't think I was gonna do this today.
Mm hmm.
It forces, it forces a level of fun. Force fun. Um, but, uh, it, it would be hard not to crack a smile.
Yeah, exactly. It's very lighthearted, but it still has some challenges.
I run into trouble of evaluate, trying to evaluate the quality of things, um, all the time. Uh, I like it. Sounds good, man.
Yeah, that's basically it. Honestly, these scenarios, e- even if you don't do these scenarios that I came up with, maybe it inspires you guys to come up.
Somebody's gonna do it. Somebody's gotta do it. And then tell us how it went.
Oh, please, if you do, you have to let us know how it goes. And how did you adjust it? How did you change it? Cause I expect you guys to change it.
And we will actually read those comments, right?
Sure. Hundred percent.
John John's reading the comments.
Yeah, yeah, I do.
I know some people don't, but I know he does.
Yeah, I read the comments, even the bad ones. The bad ones, I appreciate you guys supporting either way. And, uh, and the good ones, I appreciate you guys supporting too. You're the best.
I read the comments too. I'll be, I'll be honest. I have a little better to do.
All right, guys, that's about it. Uh, Knight City Council is officially, the, the session has ended. We have answered questions from the community. We talked about two free DLCs. And you know what we're gonna do next month, ladies and gentlemen? Uh, July, July, the month of July, we will have Knight City Council again. We'll be answering questions. Make sure you guys send us your questions so we can answer them. Is there anything else that you wanted to mention before we do our goodbyes here, James?
Oh, boy. Um, keep an eye on our socials. Uh, we'll be putting out some more free DLCs or, you know, wait until Knight City Council for us to remind you again. Um, I'm, I'm writing them. They're coming out.
That's it. Yeah, they're doing great work over there at Artel Sorian. And please, we want to reiterate, hashtag Knight City Council. Let us know on Facebook, social media, Discord, whatever it is. Let us know how you guys run these scenarios with these DLCs. We want to hear about it. We want to talk about it. We'll read your testimonials on the, the show. Why not? Of course, we would love to do that. So let us know how it goes. Um, anything else? That's it.
Lovely day.
All right. Bring that hammer down, bring that gavel down so we can end this session. The council is in session. We are adjourned. Thank you, guys. Ladies and gentlemen, have a wonderful month. We'll see you guys next month for some more Cyberpunk goodness. See you guys later. Bye.
Bye.